No, I don't mind. I just was asking.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the 26th Council meeting. You all rise for the plate.
Okay, Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Council at Large, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, Council at Large, here.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Ronald Quagliani, Council at Large, here.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskey.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskey, First District, present.
Councilwoman Melly Garthwait.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Melly Garthwait, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano, Fourth District, present.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker is absent. Councilman Victor Boris is absent. Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, Ninth District, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Peter Massaro.
Chairman Peter Massaro, Sixth District, Councilman, present.
Okay, have it formed, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, this time, anybody like to come up and address the council? Anybody like to come up and address the council? Just remember, it's a three minutes, three minutes on the call.
I heard you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rich Hebert. I live at 166 Blue Street, right here in West Haven. I'm a taxpayer in this town, and some of the problems that we have here are not being answered by you folks. So you have to live with that, and it will be remembered. The Haven, are they gonna remove the homes? Are they gonna take away the debris? Is anything going on with that? We heard before, right here in this very room, that they were gonna find them for not taking down the buildings. Obviously, that's not happening. What has the status of the roadwork that the state was gonna do to facilitate, does that go away now? We don't get it anymore? On Seven Rock, I've seen pictures of the building, but there's no overhead view that shows the encroachment in the land trust area of the boardwalk. An overhead view that would show where the existing boardwalk is and where they're gonna encroach on it. That question's been brought before the board before, but I haven't had an answer. I know a few folks know. It's one of the questions here. Have the official papers finally been signed for that process to move forward? Purchase of the land or lease agreement, whatever you folks have, has that been signed? Because that came out in the paper as being the question. On the conflict of interest statement, what's the status of that? I mean, that's been going on for almost a year. You folks were mandated by the MARB to have this conflict of interest statement signed, and it's still not taken care of? What's going on with that? Also, there was a mention of open positions on the various boards in town that have not been filled. Is there any statement of what those positions are, what the qualifications are? Because there doesn't seem to be any movement on any of that. And I bring this to everyone's attention, because what happens here is, your budget was based on the Haven being built. Guess what? It's not being built. That means my taxes are going up, and you folks are responsible for that. So if you can get any answers back to me, I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Yes, Mr. Weinstein?
During last Monday's UNH Mayor's Advisory Board public meeting, at the thirty-nine minute mark...
Excuse me, Mr. Weinstein, you had to name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paige Weinstein, Twenty Platt. Thank you. At the thirty-nine minute mark, the question of whether ethic forms for all employees have been completed, Mayor Rossi stated that they are important, and she uploaded the councils in hers, so she knows that is done. The following day, after being criticized by the MARB for still not providing a list of employees who have not completed the ethic forms, Mayor Rossi stated, and this is in the New Haven Register, "The administrative assistant to the city council manages the boards and commissions, and she should have the most updated information." The night before, the mayor stated she uploaded all of your forms. I'm confused. As crazy as it sounds that your administrative assistant to the council is responsible for all the city employees' ethic forms, if that is in fact true, I'd like somebody to get back to me to tell me when she will be completing that project. Forty minutes into the UNH Mayor's meeting, the question was asked about the problem with the homeless in town, especially with the encampments on marginal drive and the beach. Mayor Rossi stated she had a homeless center in her ARPA plan. She turned it over to the city council, and the city council sounds like they're not in favor of it. She doesn't know if it was voted on or not. So I am questioning the council as to what their position is on the homeless, the homeless center that the mayor wanted to do, that you have not. Last, I believe the rules of the council, which were adopted in February, did not address a time limit. To alter this rule requires a motion to amend and a majority vote to enact. I also believe, and this is my belief, I also believe this vote must be done in public. Would someone please provide the date in which that public meeting was held, that election, that vote was held, or would they please point out in Robert's Rules of Order where the chair can unilaterally change that rule? Thank you.
Just to give you update on the ethics information, our secretary is only responsible for the people on the committees and the council. The MARB got those back in June, so they've been sitting with them since June, ours, committees and the council people. As far as the rest of the people, personnel is responsible for those.
Thank you for that clarification. I recognize that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to get up and speak to the council? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Palatieri.
Palatieri, 215 West Walk. In January, I requested that the city council consider an ordinance to prevent the use of eminent domain for economic development. In the way of background, West Haven City Council voted in 2015 to force people to surrender their homes to the developer of the Haven. This was done in the name of economic progress. But economic progress depends on the well-being of the people who live here. Their safety and sense of security in their own homes is more important than the profit-making venture of a developer. Eminent domain for economic development does not bring prosperity. On the contrary, such widespread upheaval results in personal hardship and the destabilization of neighborhoods. It was wrong to dispossess people of their homes and businesses to build the Haven, no matter what the outcome. A shopping center is not public use. Eminent domain is for projects that are public use, such as schools and libraries. Not being happy with the disruption of over fifty families in 2015, the city planned to dispossess another two hundred families for Haven North. In fact, the city had already begun the appraisal process. Thankfully, this plan fell apart as the ugly fallout from Haven South took shape. Many developers come to West Haven, see opportunity, and negotiate in the open market to buy their sites fair and square. Economic development can go forward without eminent domain. It's wrong to expect West Haven residents to pay for economic development by giving up their homes. That's not economic development. That's economic unraveling. As a city, we need to reassure people that their home is their castle, that it won't be taken away so that someone else can make a profit. I am again asking you to consider an ordinance that will protect people, such as the one that Councilman Aaron Charney proposed in 2018. Other towns, including Milford, have already passed protective ordinances against eminent domain abuse. Prevent future Havens from destroying other neighborhoods. Please consider the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Palatieri. Anyone else like to come up and address the council? Would anybody else would like to come up and address the council? Yes, sir.
Thomas Cosa, 34 May Street. It's been a couple of months since I was able to attend any of the meetings, so I do want to say thank you to any of the council people that were able to help get the potholes taken care of on Second Ave from May Street all the way up to Elm Street. I appreciate that very much. Secondly, I do have just one thing. The, I think this goes for every district, not just any particular one. Is there something that we can really do or talk to the police about these dirt bikes, quads, and everything that are, that go up and down all of our streets? And it's not just one or two. It's a group of kids that constantly do it, anywhere from five motorcycles and quads up to, I've seen, twenty or thirty. And it's just not that. They're also on bicycles. One of these kids is gonna get hit. And when I say kids, probably some of them are adults. And what's gonna happen is, when one of those kids get hit, it's the person that hits them because of their stupidity, not the driver. The driver's the one that's gonna get sued. And it's becoming a problem. I don't know if anybody else has seen it, but there was a post on the, one of the websites today, and those two individuals that are on there, I've seen driving around. I don't know what the police can do, but if there's something that you all can come up with, maybe approach the police, because one of these days, either, like I say, one of them is gonna get killed, or they're gonna accidentally do something stupid and cause an accident with a car slamming into another car, or going onto the sidewalk, hitting a pedestrian, and I know they don't care, but... You're giving me a strange look. Do you understand? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. But, but it is happening. It may not be, I don't know if it was as frequent, frequent as it has been in the past, but like I said, in order to stop somebody's life getting, getting taken away from them because of somebody else's foolishness, I think there's something we, or you all, might be able to, to try to come up with something along with the police department. So, and I do have one question. Is, you reminded me, young gentleman, is there a Veterans Council? Or was there a Veteran Council? And there is no Veteran Councils anymore. I'm gonna say, by the way everybody's looking, there is not.
Dave Ritchie handles that. Dave Ritchie handles that.
Okay.
Retired police officer.
Okay, do the, I'm not trying to, what do they do? I've, I've looked in the charter. It doesn't give a really good description as to what they do.
They're not a city.
It's not a city?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to come up and address the council? Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, would anybody else like to come up and address it? Yes, Mr. Weinstein?
Good evening. Andy Weinstein, Twenty Platt Avenue. When I was growing up, Democrats were known for their protection of free speech, and I feel like this, this council, which is mostly Democrat, we meet in a small room, so people leave because there's no room for people to sit. We've done away with the live streaming. I didn't announce that I was gonna livestream. I didn't even think of it until a minute before the meeting started, but there's over fifty people watching my livestream. We're, we're paying this gentleman to do the video, and the difference in price is a hundred and fifty bucks to put it live. The mayor, in her town council, or town meeting, said that it was the city council that made the decision, but judging by the reaction by many of the council people, they weren't aware that we weren't livestreaming last week, or last, or two weeks ago. So it's disappointing to see that happen, and it's also disappointing to have our speech limited to three minutes. Yes, we had one meeting that went very long, but there were four hundred and thirty pages of documents, two major issues, and lots of people who were upset by the way this council handled some of the, the lead-up to, especially the garbage issue. So I would ask that you reconsider livestreaming, a bigger room to fit people who are concerned about things in this city, and to give people the ability to speak for longer than three minutes if they have that much to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein. Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, would anybody else like to, yes, Margaret?
Okay, Margaret A. Christminsky, 1 Robart Street in the Allentown section. I was very upset about it also when I heard about non-streaming. You don't want the people to have a voice in this government. A lot of people don't come here to the meetings. They like to see the live streaming. They wanna know what's going on with their government here in West Haven. You want people to be in the dark about what's going on. I'm lucky I have an iPad, so I'm able to see what is going on. I got to see what you put out there. And when I got to see, you want the firemen to have bulletproof vests. I haven't heard a fireman get injured, injured by a bullet yet in West Haven. I said to myself, what the hell is going on? I know there's fentanyl out there. It's very dangerous. I worry about anybody coming in contact with it. I could see that they have masks, but are you going to the point of wanting them to get injured by a bullet? All the equipment they have to put on to fight a fire, and I know, because I had somebody burned a car in my driveway, a number of years ago, and only two firemen came with one fire truck to put that fire out. This is many, many, many years ago, when I had a baby fifteen months old. With the way the world is going, it's disgusting, that another piece of equipment they're going to have to wear is a bulletproof vest. Is that gonna curtail them to fight a fire? That's not an easy piece of equipment to wear. Have you been practicing, or they've been practicing, to wear a bulletproof vest? That's not an easy piece of equipment to wear. You gave the go-ahead to give the money, the three fire districts. That's not an easy decision to make. I don't know if New Haven firemen wear bulletproof vests. You should question the fire chief in New Haven about it before you make that decision. Put it on hold before it's a go-ahead. I don't know about throughout the state of Connecticut, if any of those towns have that yet. That's something you should question. I read through what's on my iPad. I'm glad I have that ability.
But the live streaming... Margaret, excuse me, three minutes are up.
I'm not, I'm gonna continue. I'm not gonna be doing... That you should continue with. Other people in our community should know what goes on here. You should make the decision to put it back on.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else like to come up and address the council? Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, would anybody else like to get, address the council? Public session is over at...
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty. The regular meeting? All right, it's not the regular meeting. Approve the minutes to the regular meeting for September 12th, 2022. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Just Johnstone?
Mm-hmm. Motion passes. Approve the minutes for special meeting for September 20th, 2022. Any discussion? All in favor? Any abstentions? Motion passes. The court will read the communications next.
We have communication A from Joseph Perno, Chief of Police of the West Haven Police Department, regarding animal shelter donations being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hoskey. We have communication B from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for the month of September 2022, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. And we have communication C from Lee Tieran, Incorporated Counsel, regarding a tax agreement for Seventy Wall Street, 179 Richard Street, and 165 Richard Street, Thompson School and Sale, being assigned to the Tax Deferral Committee, Chairman Mitchell Gallagnano. And that concludes our communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. And we will turn it over to the Finance Committee. Councilwoman Hoskey.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now seven twenty-five, and your committee on finance is in session. Members present, Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilwoman Akbarali, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Quagliani, and myself acting as chair. We have, tonight before us, communication A from Chief Joseph Perno that I'd like to bring out favorably.
Some more.
Thank you. A second, Councilwoman O'Connor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We also have communication B from the September 12th, 2022 agenda. It is the contract between the West Haven Board of Ed and the West Haven Administrators Association. I'd like to bring this out favorably. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The finance updates, one, two, three, and four. Nobody's here to give an update, so your Finance Committee has closed at seven twenty-six.
Someone do communication B?
Public lands. Public lands.
Go to public lands. Chairman, Chairman O'Connor, there, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now seven twenty-four. The committee on public lands is in session. Members present are Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilman Quagliani, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Bruno, and myself acting as chair. We have before us communication G from August 22nd, agenda from Lee Tieran, Incorporated Counsel, regarding the potential sale, lease, or transfer of 25 Herman Street. We are gonna hold it in committee because we haven't gotten, received any information on it. And, yep, the time is now seven twenty-five, and your committee on public lands is now closed.
We'll go to the Councilman Galliano on the tax deferral.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is seven twenty-five, and your tax deferral committee members are Councilman Bruno, Councilman Johnstone, Councilwoman Akbarali, and Councilwoman Tucker. Tonight, we have a communication from Lee Tieran, Corporate Counsel, regarding tax agreement for Seventy Wall Street, 179 Richard Street, 165 Richard Street, Thompson School sale. So he gave me two exhibits. They both say Exhibit A on them. So I would like to get Lee here to make sure that we do Exhibit A as correct. I don't know if anybody else has Exhibit A and A.
Mitch? I'm sorry. You just bring it out favorably. You have a second, and then we can have the discussion, if you don't mind.
I would like to bring this out favorably.
Second.
Make the motion.
Tucker?
Thank you. Okay, now, I would like to discuss Exhibit A and Exhibit A. So I think, Councilman Quagliani, want to go get Lee? I believe one should be A and one should be B.
No.
Oh, no?
You're supposed to choose which one you want.
Oh, I, I know which one I want, or what the committee does.
Right.
So the, we're gonna choose Exhibit A, and we're gonna do ten years at forty-three thousand six thirty-seven forty-four for the ten years tax payment. Right?
Well, it's up to the committee.
Well, no, yep, I talked to the committee about it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on. Lee, before you sit, before I take a vote again, so they both say Exhibit A, and they're supposed to, supposed to both say Exhibit A? Yeah, because you have to choose which Exhibit A you want. So, well, we're, right, okay. All right, that makes no sense to me, but okay. It, it made sense because you seem to be indicating a preference for one. Right. Other members were indicating a preference for another. I didn't think it was my place to choose. We came on an agreement on Exhibit A for forty-three thousand six thirty-seven forty-four. All right. So is that how I read it into the record then? Yes. You would say the assessment that is frozen for ten years with an anticipated tax revenue of forty-three thousand six hundred eighty-six. Okay. So with an assessment of ten years for forty-three thousand six thirty-seven forty-four. Motion. We already had a motion. This was, we're in discussion, right? You're reading the one you want, correct? Mm-hmm. Okay, so we're making, I'm gonna make the motion for the one we wanted. I need a second.
A second.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Any, any abstentions? Any, any opposed? Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. My, now, my Committee on Tax Deferral has closed at seven twenty-nine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galliano. Business updates. Would you like to hear from Colleen Bailey?
Bailey.
Bailey, please.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Colleen Bailey. I'm the Executive Director of the Library. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about the Allentown Library location. Just have a few things to say, and then I'll answer any questions that you may have about the project. As you are aware, the VIA, the five-oh-one-C-three that governs the library board, purchased land at six thirty-four Orange Avenue for the project back in June. Throughout twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the Village Improvement Association met with City Council members and Lee Tieran about possible library locations, including six-six-eight Orange Avenue, being deeded over to library after foreclosure. Combining the two parcels of six-six-eight and six thirty-four would be an ideal for a library location. As of today, that has not occurred. Despite this, six thirty-four is viable as a space for the future library location. The purchase was ultimately made with private funds from the library's endowment and not tax dollars. The library has already secured a state library construction grant, has applied for other grants, and is embarking on an aggressive capital campaign with the hiring of the Giving Collaborative. We also hope to include the one million in ARPA funds from the city. My hope for this project is that the library is fully operational by spring of twenty-five. Through attrition and retirements, the staffing of the former Pantino location was both absorbed into library operations or not replaced. Once the project is well underway, we know when the facility will open. That is when staffing will be brought in. Sticking with the previous timeline, I would anticipate fall of twenty-four for a full-time librarian. Keeping in mind the staffing levels needed for the library of the size we are looking to build is of vital importance and is at the forefront of even initial drawings. We want a welcoming space that Allentown residents can utilize while maintaining safety for both staff and residents and oversight throughout the building. Rough estimates would include one full-time librarian, one full-time library assistant, two part-time assistants, and a part-time custodian that's shared with Aura Mason. Estimates for cost for staffing would be on par with Aura Mason, around a hundred and twenty thousand per year. We have not finalized architectural drawings for the library space, but we are looking into all utility cost-saving measures, such as a LEED-certified space, solar panels, LED lighting, low-water-use toilets, et cetera. Using Aura Mason as a baseline, utilities would be approximately thirty-seven thousand per year. This would include gas, electric, telephone, and network costs. Other costs unique to the Allentown building will be the cost for library supplies and books. I would anticipate for fiscal year twenty-four, minimal operational costs, with fiscal year twenty-five being when the library will be fully functional. As you are all aware, we did a feasibility study at City Council's request in twenty twenty-one that indicated the library is underfunded, run efficiently, and needs a third location based on the unique makeup of West Haven. And I'm sure that there are some questions, so.
I'll open up to the council. Anybody have any questions? Councilwoman.
So, when, when you use Aura Mason as a benchmark for cost analysis, what's the square footage of Aura Mason versus what the square footage would be for Allentown?
It would be a larger library. So, Aura Mason is a sixty-five-hundred-square-foot facility right now. The facility that we are looking to build is between ten and twelve thousand, depending if it's a one-story building or a two-story building. Much like, much like.
So, wouldn't, when you say thirty-seven thousand, it wouldn't really be thirty-seven thousand then for utilities?
Well, we're also looking at cost saving. Aura Mason is also a building that's been, it's built, was built in the sixties, so we do have, you know, looking to do, we're looking to do more updates and things as well. And this is just an estimate at this time. We don't know for sure what it, what it's actually going to be. But the, the hours for that branch will also be less than the main library.
So, did you ever do? I know when we met over, it wasn't the summer last year, when you were talking about how we all met. Did you ever do the five-year plan as far as like, what the cost would be? You know, how? Because right now, all of it's hypotheticals, but right now, it's like a hundred and sixty thousand more that you're going to ask for in twenty-four or twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
In twenty-five. So, it's a hundred and sixty thousand more.
I mean, we have done some studies. We do have a three-year plan. Our plan is, is a generic plan. It is looking at making sure that the library is, we're, we're serving the residents of West Haven, that we have the technology help that people come in desperately looking for. Those digital navigator funds that we, that were allocated for the library, we'll be able to expand that program even further in making sure that we're helping those residents in that area as much as we possibly can.
So, my concern is, and I shared this with you, I don't know if it was a year ago, that I thought it would be prudent to do a five-year plan, not, um, forgot the wording you just used for your three-year, but I really deep what it's going to cost or what the projections were going to be. Because I know that the Village Improvement Endowment, no one has any say over that. Like, you have said that, and we have agreed. But the library is a department that is on our budget lines. And we have the oversight of the MARB asking us to be prudent in how we're going to do things. So, we need to know, and I have asked, not for guessing or these, but a plan to say, this is what we're gonna do, so that when the MARB says, okay, City Council, where are you getting a hundred and sixty grand in three years from?
So, what we do do is like I do like every other department, like you mentioned, I submit the same line by line of what we're spending our funding on, which is, which is submitted every single year. I can look at forecasting that out to our best of our abilities, going on this, based on this plan, what those costs would be and what those costs would go towards.
Right, because I've asked for this. We've, we've discussed this, because I know the MARB is going to ask us, how are you going to fund that, City Council? Because that's the commitment we would be making. Like, you want a commitment from us. So, you're saying, well, this is what we're gonna need, and we're saying, oh, gung ho. And then we're gonna go in front of the MARB, and they're gonna say, yes, they have no say over your endowment, but they're gonna to question us on where we're getting that hundred and sixty grand. And it might be more, and it might be less, but I can't, I would just not be, it has not, I would just not be doing my job if we do not have a clear understanding of what the long-term ask is for. Because that is what the MARB is telling us. We do not plan. We just kind of fly by night. We live paycheck to paycheck, is what they're, that they would say, that, that we don't plan. And I'm just sitting here thinking, where are we going to find a hundred and sixty grand? And I do, I just really ask that we not accuse me or say that I do not want a library in Allentown. I get very upset when I hear that, because that is not what I'm saying. I'm saying the best way to get a library in Allentown is for us to plan and try to figure it out and not do willy-nilly and say in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna figure out a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do it. Because, I mean, you're not talking sixteen grand. You're talking at least a hundred and sixty.
One thing I do wanna point out is that the library is point eight percent of the total budget. For, for somebody who pays five thousand dollars a year in taxes, that's forty dollars that goes to the library. We are not a big ticket item as far as the city goes. It's, we do, we have a massive return on investment for anyone who comes to the library. A person who takes out four books, that's, that's the money that they've put into the library. For somebody who comes in and does two hours of tech help, that is paid for in and of itself for them coming in.
I have, at my, what I am saying, I think you're misunderstanding me. And I have not ever once thought that the services that the library brings to this city is not valuable. I've had private conversations with you and to the Village Improvement to say, as a child, that library was my babysitter. Because back then, when my mom worked, we had nowhere to go. So, that library that sits on Elman Campbell Avenue watched me until my mom left. Mr. Donuts, it wasn't Dunkin' Donuts back then, it was Mr. Donuts. So, I need you to understand what I'm saying here now, today. It's not about the twenty dollars that's coming from the tax bill or out of my five thou, or my seven thousand that I'm paying taxes. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying the public and the MARB is going to say, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Where we, where are we going to find it? And that's. We, we, none of us might even be in these seats. And then in three years, people are like, what were the, what were they thinking? How were we gonna add? That's not what I'm saying. My, we have to plan for it and figure out where we're gonna get the revenue. And I know you could say, well, we just need it. I, I get that, but you can't get. Blood from a stone, so. So, that's my only form. My question to you would, would be to ask.
So, if we were to plan and look at our budget, because again, we're about to get into looking at our budget for next year, for fiscal year, are you asking me to then start putting in place now the ask for the funds for that library? So, when that library comes into play in twenty, fifth year, twenty-five, we've already has that covered.
You, you need to show it, yes. And I said, like, you, the Allentown staff that you had, you absorbed it.
Yeah, we lost, we lost, we had three employees who retired during COVID, when our budget was cut fairly dramatically. And then we've added some staff as we've opened more hours at the main library.
Staff isn't going back to Allentown.
No, they're not.
Right. So, we have to, like, we have to plan. You, you don't, sometimes, I, 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 I feel like I'm dominating the conversation. I don't, I don't want to, Chairman. All I'm saying is, is that we have to plan for it. We have to, we, I said this to you a year ago, and I said, what is it gonna cost to run the operations of a brand-new library? I want you to have it. I want to, I want to do it, but I, I want to do it, period. I just need to be very responsible, because the MARB is gonna come knocking up, where are you getting an additional hundred and sixty grand? And that's my only, it's my only point, is that we have to try to figure it out, so we can come to them and say, there is a plan. It's not willy-nilly that in twenty, in twenty twenty-five, just a hundred and sixty grand added to the budget, you know? That we've planned for it. I don't know. Chairman, I'm, hold on a second.
So, Colleen, I, so, what Councilwoman Hosky is, is indicating is something that, so, for example, we had a five-year plan. Every year, we have a five-year financial plan that we, that the city has to cross out every single department for the next five years, right? Going forward, what their operational budget's gonna be, what their capital budget's gonna be. And this way, we have a forecast for the next five years, what our mill rate may look like. So, we need you to do the same thing as the library, because we have to plug those numbers into that five-year plan, because, you know, you're funded by the city, and those are city dollars. So, we need to be able to make sure that that's included in the plan. So, if, if, so, on the website is like our current five-year plan. So, you can kind of take a look at the format, but I think what we need is from twenty-four all the way up through twenty-eight, what, what it looks like for the library expenditure going forward. And, and, I know we typically have one light item now, but if you could break that out, right?
Yeah, oh, I always break it. I always do the same, like I did everybody else does.
So, I think that's what we need. So, we know as a council, so we have a five-year plan that we still haven't approved yet for this year. So, when it comes in front of us, we could say, okay, here's the city's operations. Here's the sewer plant. Here's the Allentown Fire Department. Here's all the city departments. Here's the, the library, and here's where the new expenses are starting to hit in twenty-four, right? And then here's where, where the operation's gonna start in twenty-five. Just so we, we forecasted that for the MARB, because if we don't, again, they're, they're, they're gonna say, well, you have, you have a five-year plan, but you didn't allocate the appropriate funding and able to get through on this mill rate. So, so I think, you know, that, that's what we need to plug in, is to that, to that particular five-year plan. Just like I, so, the Allentown Fire Department, they want, they, they are in need of a new fire headquarters, right? And I have to make sure, that, we all have to make sure, is that what their ask is, is incorporated in that five-year plan, right? To make sure that we understand what that is gonna cost to the taxpayers of Allentown, and if, if it's something that we wanna move forward or not move forward. So, so the, the, the benefit of, of, of your five-year plan is your, is citywide, right? Spread the dollars, spread out citywide. But we just need to know the dollars now, what's your anticipated staff? You know, how much is your library budget? Right now, it's what, a million, five, change or something?
Yeah, we're one-five-seven-five.
Yeah, so, so we need to understand, what does that look like in twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
So, right now, those would be, those would be some rough estimates. We will be going into contract negotiations with staffing in the next, probably, I think, six to eight months or so.
So, include a placeholder, right? So, if, 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 if the comparables are, are two percent, then that year, you know, for a contract, yeah, add, add two percent or whatever it may be. And then, and just, just so, you know, it could be followed along. Again, just so it's incorporate, if it's not incorporated in the plan, we're gonna be in, in, we're gonna have a problem, because we're not gonna have funding allocated. So, all I'm saying is, is let's put it in the plan now. Let's start that process now. So, it shows in twenty-four, and it shows in twenty-five, and it shows in twenty-six. So, we, we, we're transparent, right? We know, the taxpayers know what the projected mill rate's gonna be, you know, for next year, the year after, the year after that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Hold on a second, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Hello. We match.
Pardon?
We match.
We do, we do. We, we called each other in the morning. I'm concerned about the price also and the cost of, of, you know, I, I wanna make sure that the city's not burdened with a mill rate to kind of support that, and I'm sure that you'll follow through with the finances. My concern too is the infrastructure itself. Are there plans, are there solid plans on what is going to be built in, with the land that you have acquired? And has, has there been any serious talks with the city engineer to talk about, to make sure we're not adding any flooding problems to the neighborhood behind the library that's already suffering quite?
We did have someone come in to take a look at the land to make sure that we would ensure that, and there would be some water catch things that are put in place to ensure that we're not an added burden to that neighborhood kind of behind, where the library is protected to go. Like I said, we're still in the initial planning phases with, with all of that. Obviously, once we have some more concrete plans, I can always bring those to share with the City Council as well.
I'd be very interested in that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have?
Colleen, thanks for coming again. Definitely appreciate it. A couple of things. One, it's been said publicly, it's been said to me on the side and this and out in public that, oh, the City Council just doesn't want a library in Allentown. I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but that's far and few bete, that's the farthest thing from our mind, is, yes, we do want a library in Allentown. There have been offers before of putting places, you know, temporary spots for now, and it's been rejected. But going forward with that, and I think you understand now, is we just can't say, yes, we're going to give you this money. We need to have a budget. We need to have all this stuff, because there's a lot more than just saying yes or no to the money, right? So, we need to do that. My concern is different. That's all been talked about. My concern is now is the same as it was when it first came out, is the safety of the residents getting there. I'm talking about from the opposite side of the Post Road. Children, elderly, getting off the bus or something like that. How are they getting across that Post Road to the library? That's, that's my biggest concern there. And I'm not saying I don't want a library there, so let's, you know, for the record, a hundred percent want a library in Allentown. I just want it to be safe all the way around. I know somebody said, well, there's a, there's a light there half a block down or whatever it is. I get that, but it's still the Boston Post Road. Have you looked into asking the state, and it might be a little premature, but asking the state to put some kind of a crosswalk or some kind of a blinking, you know?
That is one of the things on the agenda as things move forward. Again, we're still in the planning stages for this. Right now, we're in the, quite frankly, we need money to build the library stage, and we have applied for a number of state grants. There's also at the National. Um, there's also at the national level, um, me and actually the interim city librarian from New Haven have also been kind of really pushing for some of these state love, federal funding for library projects such as West Haven. We are a distressed municipality. We do wanna have sidewalks everywhere, making sure there's crosswalks for people to be able to get places safely. And obviously, I wanna make sure that everyone is safe as possible that's coming to the library. But we are still very much in the beginning stages and one of those talks will be with this, with the state in trying, trying to make sure that the infrastructure there is put in place for that library when, when it's built.
But that's, that's exactly, as long as we're on the same page with that. And again, the council suggests things, and sometimes, even before I got on the council, it seems like it falls on deaf ears, and I'm not saying you, it might be the group, whoever. Uh, it just, it helps to move things forward. The suggestions rank, it's not to make it harder on the library or, or the village improvement. It, it's to, makes our job easy and makes it easier for us to sell, possibly sell to the people. Not that we're selling it to the people, but explaining it to the people, if the mill rate has to go up, this is the reason why. Or maybe not. Maybe we can get it done, uh, without having the mill rate go up, so. Just so everybody understands that we're not against, well, I don't mean to speak for everybody, but I think I can say we are not against the library whatsoever. It just seems like it's, there's always that pushback, maybe more so on you, your end, not you personally, but your end than, than our end. Because I know before I got here, there were requests and it was never, never done. So, just something to keep in mind.
Yep.
Take that back to the group. Thank you. Thank you. Chair House.
Colleen, thank you. Thank you for coming before us. I, I know you, you made it clear you're in the beginning stages of this, and I appreciate that. Do you have any idea what this, the projected cost is, is gonna be? Or we lock, you lock into any contract?
We are not, I mean, the only thing right now is when I initially did the state construction grant last year, the cost we was estimating at four point eight million, it's going to be more than that. We know it's gonna be more than that. Um, so I'm a s- where I'm saying right now, again, this is very rough estimate, so don't hold me to it, but we're probably looking about eight million.
So it went from four point eight to eight?
Yes. We did request through the CIF funds at the, for the state, four million dollars as well. Um, hopefully, we hear about that the next week or so. If those do not, if we do not get approved for those, we will also apply again in November. Um, like I said, we're looking for the million dollars. We're also looking to start a very aggressive capital campaign as well to raise funds for this project. And the VIA will be putting in money from the, a large portion from the endowment as well towards the project.
And the land has already been purchased?
The land has been purchased.
And paid for?
Yes.
So now it's a matter of you getting the appropriated funds to put the building up?
Correct.
And it went from four point eight?
Again, it's costs, you know, I think everyone knows, construction costs have gone up fairly dramatically. Hopefully, that stuff will start coming down a bit as well.
Or give somebody on the contract to, you know, for the, to the near future on, on trying to lock in a certain price?
Yeah.
Over, over time.
Well, with the state construction grant, we can't, we can't start utilizing those funds until we have that three-point-eight match. Once we have that three-point-eight match, we can immediately then start doing the building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? May I say something first?
Yeah.
Colleen, you bought this property. Thank you for coming to, I appreciate it. You bought this property to build this library, and now you're saying it's gonna cost you, cost eight million dollars. Did anybody sit down in the village improvement organization and have plans drawn up to find out that this building's gonna end up costing you more than four million dollars? And my personal thing is, I'm on a library in Allentown, but why wasn't it more feasible to try to go into CVS?
So we did sit down to discuss with CVS, uh, when was that? I forget. Maybe about a couple of months ago?
A month ago.
A month ago. Um, we did sit down with the developer. He wanted a rather large retainer to even have us consider it. We do not obviously have the five million dollars they're looking for immediately for that. The state construction grants would then, we'd have to then reapply for that. We would not be eligible to apply for that until next year with the funds not even being available till fiscal year twenty-five. So, we're already down a fairly far path with this other location. Um, is CVS a possi- could it have been a possibility if that happened six months prior? Possibly, but we don't also have the immediate funds that they're looking for to purchase that property.
Okay, so, to build a library for eight million dollars, you don't have the funds to start that either. So it's gonna take you quite a few years to start building this library. Because you don't have no funds to even start it.
We have, I mean, we have some funds. Uh, like I said, we are also in the capital campaign, capital campaign process right now. We are also applying for state and federal grants as well.
Which you're not sure you're gonna get, really.
It's all a process. This, this whole thing is a process. But we, but for this, at least we have the land, so yes, if it does take us longer, we still have the land purchased already for this project. That CVS project, we can't put tie-up money that's maybe gonna be possible for us to go there and then three months later have to give them another retainer to then maybe be able to go forward with that. I mean, the process alone for buying this other parcel took, it took months.
They don't wanna sell it? They just wanna release it? CVS?
It, um... They wanted to sell it.
Okay.
So while we're talking about money, we have to address the elephant that's in the room, and it's the million dollars of the, of the ARPA money, but it's connected to another property. So, um, if this council was to just, you know, say, okay, yes, the library can have that million dollars, do you know the timeline? Like, would the project be where it had to be so we wouldn't have to give the million dollars back? You, you know, in the timeline, because I'm not sure of the timeline.
Really stick to a very tight timeline, and like I said, I wanna see that library open by spring of twenty-five. We're gonna be, like I said, we're aggressive capital campaign. We are applying for a lot of grants. Um, there's a lot, we're hoping that there's also federal funds out there, which I am fairly confident that we can get if those all, if that all passes for this project.
Anybody else? Okay, Colleen, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Right, thank you. I do have copies of my letter if you'd like it.
Yes, please. Thank you so much.
Okay, updates, videos, palos, lights, the time is on here.
So we're gonna hold that and...
Yeah.
So, so, uh, yeah, so we're gonna just send it into committee reports?
Call it committee reports, yeah.
Yep. At seven fifty-six, and I'll read, uh, Communication B into the record.
Yep.
Uh, so we have, uh, committee reports, uh, Communication B from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for the month of September twenty twenty-two, which will be filed with tonight's minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Committee reports, so start with the Finance Committee. Councilwoman Hosky.
Thank you, um, Chairman, to the, um, Communication A, to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven. Your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of the animal shelter donations, reports that the committee met on the twenty-sixth day of September twenty twenty-two to consider said matter. It is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The West Haven Police Department has received the following donations totaling two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents for the animal shelter per Connecticut Statute seven dash one four eight C three A and B in the General Order ninety-eight dash oh four. We are forwarding these donations for approval. The City Council, the City of West Haven hereby approves the animal shelter donations to be deposited into the annual, animal shelter donation account one zero one zero 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 two eight two eight five. Steven Simon for fifty dollars, Joseph Adam for twenty-five, Linda Kaminsky for twenty-five, Robert Harrington for twenty-five, Barbara Brown for ten dollars, and Frontstream SPV LLC seventy-eight dollars and forty cents.
What the Councilwoman Hosky just read, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Oh, excuse me. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter from Neil Cavallaro Superintendent of Schools regarding the contract between the West Haven Board of Ed and the West Haven Administrators Association. Reports that the committee met on the twenty-sixth day of September twenty twenty-two to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City Council, the City of West Haven hereby approves the following contract between the West Haven Board of Ed and the West Haven Administrators Association from September twelve, twenty twenty-three. Excuse me, August thirty-first, twenty twenty, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Councilwoman Hosky read. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second in by Gallano.
Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Motion passes.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And we're into public lands.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Communication G from, uh, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two is being held. Do you need me to read anything else?
No, and that just concludes the Public Lands Committee.
Yep. That concludes the, uh...
Okay. Now we're going to tax deferral. Councilman Belliano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Communication C. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Tax Deferral, to whom was referred the matter of tax agreement and sale of Seventy Hall Street, one seventy-nine Richards Street, and one sixty-five Richards Street Thompson School. Reports that the committee met on the twenty-second day of, this is August, I don't think we're in August, to consider said matter. So, today is the twenty-sixth of September. To consider said matter, is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City of, the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the tax agreement and sale of Seventy Hall Street, one seventy-nine Richards Street, and one sixty-five Richards Street Thompson School. Whereas, the City of West Haven seeks to land in empty and unused former school building known as Thompson School. Whereas, the City of West Haven used the RFP process to seek and identify appropriate developers. Whereas, a private developer desires to invest seven million dollars to create fifty residential housing units. Whereas, the City of West Haven desires to generate building permit and property tax revenue from development and the end cost of maintaining the building known as Thompson School. Whereas, the City of West Haven acknowledges that a tax agreement with the development is in the best interest of both the developer and the city. Resolved, that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves execution of a tax agreement as presented to the council this day that lasts for ten years with Enclave Properties LLC subject to the following conditions. One, assessed valuation of the parcel known as Thompson School shall not exceed nine hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred forty dollars for the next ten years. Two, subject to the final Corporation Council Office review and approval. Three, Enclave Properties LLC agrees to accept title to the property known as Thompson School immediately following the vote on this resolution and tender the balance of the two hundred and fifty thousand owed or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Four, Enclave Properties LLC shall implement immediately a hiring and purchasing practice that maximizes a diverse workforce and West Haven residents and West Haven vendors. Five, if the development project is not completed on or before October first, twenty twenty-five, Enclave shall pay the City of West Haven an additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar penalty. Further resolved that Nancy Rossi as Mayor of the City of West Haven is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to the resolution on behalf of the City of West Haven and to do and to perform all acts and things she deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such...
Documents. Thank you.
Breathe. Now I could have a drink.
What, Councilwoman?
Not alcohol.
I don't know, just read. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Lee, you behind that podium somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Curtain man behind her. Just before we, we, we on the, the tax, Exhibit A, does that have to be put into the motion?
No, it's made clear what you wanted, right?
All right, I just wanted to make sure we're...
So that's what will be part of our agreement. That'll be part of the agreement we assign. You're instructing me to make sure that that is the one that's part of the agreement.
Just wanted to be clear before we just say yes and then something changes.
And just so the council knows, when you approved this developer, they're here now, Enclave, um, uh, you did, I checked the minutes as you normally do. Um, you did say before you finalize it, come back. So there was some discussion if we could finalize it now, so here they are. I'm gonna ask them for a check after you vote.
Can I ask them for one, two, or?
I get a check for reading order.
I'm only kidding, by the way, the public. I take my whopping monthly pay that we all get, so, so, all right, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Councilwoman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ronald Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melli Garthwaite?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell Gallagnano?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Massaro.
Yes. Well, she carries.
And if I, I may have a moment, Mr. Chair? So with that, uh, just so the council knows and the public knows, uh, these developers have been performing cleaning services on your Thompson School building at no cost to the city while they've been waiting and hoping development. They put down fifty percent of the proceeds upon your approval. Um, as a developer, I have the deed. Do you have a check?
I guess you're making a mistake on the first one? I gotta write it though. That's right with you.
All right. So here's the deed.
Thank you, sir.
So tomorrow, they will be the proud owners of Thompson School, and more importantly, we won't be.
Congratulations, Colleen.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Adoption, adoption of orders is in previous, nothing? Lee, don't go too far.
Okay.
Uh, council ladies on reports?
None.
New business. I got two things on the new business, and I gotta speak to Lee. Lee, don't go too far.
I, I just wanna remind the city that, um, there's a Hope and Unity Festival, and it's gonna be Friday, um, September thirtieth, from eight to, um, I mean, six to eight PM. And October first, from three, um, from one to three, I'm sorry, from three to eight PM. And it's the three churches that are getting together, Gateway, Vertical, and First Congregational Church. And it's gonna be at Old Oak, um, Grove Park, and we hope to see everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, hang up then. Mitch, you wanna go and get Lee for a second, I mean, quickly? Go ahead.
Just under the new business, just got in the disc, which is a good, good thing. These people have been doing this for a long time. Um, they have, uh, marginal drive trail and West, West River Memorial Park cleanups going on. Uh, the first Saturday, uh, well, obviously not September, but October first, November fifth, December third, from... November fifth, December third, from eleven to one. Please, everybody and anybody that's interested in helping out, even if it's for ten, fifteen minutes or whatever, stop by there. Um, it's in, again, it's on marginal drive. So, thank you. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Lee, two questions, two things were brought up at the, uh, public session, and I want your version, and not a long version, a short version, of two things at the havens. What is the story of the havens as far as the buildings? Are they coming down? Are they getting permits? And is the street still gonna be revitalized by the state, or is it gonna be left alone?
Okay, so as the latter, the grant does provide for, um, improvements along Elm Street with the anticipation of a high-traffic user of that site. Um, so I don't know that that would, you know, until we're, until we have evidence that there, that there's gonna be a high-traffic use of that site. Uh, I don't know that it makes sense, um, but, um, grants, if they're not utilized for their original purpose, are usually repurposed for another purpose. So if it's clear that, um, the haven isn't gonna go forward as originally planned or as amended, then, uh, we should be looking to repurpose that grant. And, uh, I know the state has not been receptive to, uh, bond money, uh, at present. Um, so we'd have to negotiate that with the E C D. Um, they, the haven has paid for nine demolition permits. Uh, the demolition's supposed to begin, uh, at the old Knicks and work its way up. Um, they're working out the hazmat issues with the building department. Uh, the building department wasn't satisfied with the hazmat plan they had as of Friday. I didn't get a chance to talk to Mr. Glabwin today, but he's hoping that they provide the changes necessary so they can get started. Uh, so I would anticipate demolition could start this week, um, assuming they get that hazmat plan. Um, for those who don't know, hazmat plan, that's just, um, any building has hazardous materials. If you're my age, uh, the Pipe Covers Union was a very powerful union, and they sprayed every piece of pipe that they could. And so there's asbestos even on, you know, older residences. So that's considered hazardous, other materials. Asbestos could be in shingles, floor tile, so on and so forth. So that has to be disposed of properly, um, before you can demolish the rest of the building, and that's what they're working on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Motion adjourned?
No. I have one more, sorry. Well, I had, well, I got you, and it was brought up. Um, yes, they're supposed to start demolition, but can, listen, excuse my French, public, but they screwed us. Um, so why don't just blight? I think if we start hitting them harder in the pocket, or at least putting it out there, maybe that'll get them to start pushing it along and getting these buildings done a lot quicker and not dragging their feet anymore.
Yeah, so at the mayor, at the mayor's insistence, the blight officer has cited them, and the fines will continue to accrue. Um, we might look, if they could get demolition started sooner rather than later. Uh, we might look favorably on negotiating those, uh, blight liens. But, um, the mayor was adamant that those were not waiting any longer. Those blight liens had to go forward. So the blight officer did go there, and, um, she has begun the process.
When you say negotiate the blight liens, what do you mean?
Well, anytime someone has a blight lien, um, sometimes you, you, uh, negotiate the final cost of the lien. So you put the lien on, and oftentimes, somebody goes to sell a property. The lien could be five years old. Um, there could be different reasons why. Um, maybe the lien wasn't appropriate. Maybe if I look in the file, it doesn't seem to match what we're saying it matches, so on and so forth. Um, I would agree that with this particular owner, it doesn't, uh, I, I can't envision, as I stand here today, what would be the accommodation we would need to give them at this point.
All right, thank you.
And who's the blight officer?
Well, the person in...
What department does it, do they come out of?
Okay, so we have a blight officer currently that works both in the building department and in public works. And I should know her name off the top of my head, but I don't. Um, but she, the reason why she works in public works has to do with illegal dumping. So she tries to crack down on illegal dumping, especially in places like Spring Street, so on and so forth. And, um, she also, uh, is involved in Haven, um, and other blight issues that we assign her to.
So could, could we see that on that list? Because the Haven's been the big topic, but there are others that, in my mind, um, fit that definition, including the old Debonair Motel, including the old Blue Ribbon Car Wash on the gateway to our city there, burnt out for over a year. Um, Atlas Moving Company that has been tagged, the entire building's got graffiti all over it. I think those all fall, fall underneath that definition. If they could look at those as well.
That's been done. Atlas has been done.
It's been done.
The new owner's doing a big job on it.
I drove by the highway. It didn't look like it was done the other day, but if you could add those two, if they did, that's great. Thank you.
Yes, I will plan to report back on that subject at your next meeting.
Set? Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned. Second.
Wait, anybody wanna, uh?